Okay, again nine o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and I'll be nurse or pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And consider it a privilege to stand as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Morning.
Next is approval of today's agenda.
Yeah, I've got.
I will make a motion to approve today's agenda as presented.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just for a note. Renee is attending the Iowa State Association of Counties meetings along with several other department heads this morning, so that's why. She asked that we let everybody know why she was absentee today.
Okay. Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries next is approval of the minutes of eight thirteen twenty twenty five.
I make motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? On the agenda, it said twenty twenty five eight, but. Um, here none, none other, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next is approval of claims for payment of eight twenty of twenty twenty five.
Lance, I make a motion to approve the claims of payment, uh, for payment dated August twentieth twenty twenty five.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries, I have nine oh one, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. On the proposed resolution declaring EMS an essential service in Harden County. Uh, before I go into that, um, can we verify application?
Yes.
Okay, and written oral comments?
They're in a blue folder up here for, uh, anybody to look at and anything that comes in in the future will be added to that.
Okay. And I know you had a statement you would make.
Yeah, so just to kick things off this morning, uh, I thank everybody for being here. Um, this is an important, uh, subject for me, uh, as I was licensed to practice in EMS for over twenty years here in Harden County. Uh, or actually in the state. Um, I've worked in big cities, I've worked in rural Iowa, I've worked in suburban Iowa. And so I understand there's a challenge, there's things are changing and and the needs in our communities have changed, so, um. Going forward, what we're doing today is really, uh, hearing from the public, figuring out, uh, if we wanna move forward with, uh, having the state mandated advisory code. But in twenty twenty one, the legislature passed a law that allows counties to declare EMS as an essential service. The law requires counties to hold three public hearings like this, uh, before the board of supervisors can take a vote to move their question forward. At that point, it goes to voters of Harden County through ballot measure. This process is about ensuring that EMS funding is treated with the same importance as fire and law enforcement. But ultimately, this decision rests with the public and the voters of Harden County. As part of this process, the citizen-led EMS Advisory Council is tasked with assessing Harden County's needs and recommending how EMS should be funded. Initially, when we started discussing the makeup of that council, I initially proposed that every mayor in Harden County could serve or appoint a delegate for that, uh, one of those positions. And each township trustee board could do the same. Uh, I then received input suggesting that e- each EMS entity in the county should also have a representative. And as I explained a few weeks ago, I'm, I'm fine with that approach. But everybody just needs to understand that putting forty people on a single committee is going to pose some management, uh, issues. So, but going forward, I am going to vote yes to move this forward. Uh, the formal vote can't take place until after the three public hearings take place, but, uh, I'm welcome to hear everybody's input today. Uh, so the questions, uh, there's a lot of questions that those have to be for to the advisory council once that advisory council, uh, is determined. So just a couple other highlights of the legislation, by law, the counties may use only two types of funding to support EMS. It's either a property tax levy up to seventy five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. A local income surtax of up to one percent or a combination of the two. So it's the advisory council's responsibility to study the needs and recommend which approach is best for Harden County. So my role as a supervisor is to facilitate the required hearings and ensure that the county attorney and auditor have what they need for ballot language and election administration and to maintain how the process is handled. So, um, all oral comments in the public hearing are part of the record and will, uh, hopefully be considered by the advisory council and I, I assume this will pass at a later date. But today, we're just here to hear from the public. And, and again, uh, I think we're, we're in a good position to move forward. Uh, one member of the public contacted me the other day and, and said that another county, uh, worked on this for a little under a year and they've come to a determination of sixty one cents. And they're gonna put theirs on their school ballot measure, uh, in November, school city ballot on in November, so. With that being said, if you'd like to speak for the EMS public hearing, there's a sign up sheet that way in the back. And please come to the podium, introduce yourself and, uh, that's, those are my comments, Lance.
Okay. Well, from there, we can go ahead and take the first public comment. Daryl.
I'm just gonna make a procedural clarification.
Yes.
The code like, like any other, uh, ordinance or something, it has to move forward for the three meetings, there would have to be, uh, three different votes, so, uh, the, after the public hearing today. The matter will be put on for its first vote next week and then the second public hearing will be held after that on the same day and then following week, the vote will be put before the board again, so it has to be approved three times, that anytime it fails. Then it fails, so it has to, has to succeed to continue on.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, hey, Daryl, do you have a sign up right in front of you?
I do.
Gotta call off first person.
Is it? I don't know if I can read the last name, H O U T or H U N D?
H O Whitey?
Okay. Wait, oh, yeah.
Are you gonna offer any more information than what you just did?
I don't have anything else really to offer at this point, Dave.
I can offer procedural, procedurals, but are you after?
More procedural probably. But so you formed a committee, is all right?
No, no, we have not formed a committee yet.
So the committee has not been formed?
No, we have to affirm this three times before we can start anything official.
If there's a, uh, five steps to this. The first step is holding of public hearings and the resolution, the proposed resolution we pass at each of the three, uh, after the three public hearings. So the passing of the resolution three times is the second step. Then step three is the creation of an advisory council, which is to include the, uh, ambulance, um, services, you know, there to be part of that council. And then step four, that council recommends what's going to be put on a ballot measure in terms of taxation. And the plan is gonna be put on a ballot measure, then it's step five is to be put on a, on a ballot for all the voters of the county to consider voted up or down.
Do you have any comments on that?
No, I guess, but your intent is to give one representative from each township, one from each community. And then one from each EMS department?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was BJ's comment.
Yes, okay. So those haven't been determined yet.
Correct.
Some, they can't be until after the third hearing.
Right, some cities, so, uh, after the initial meeting, I, our board secretary sent out a notice to cities and townships that they could initiate a process to preemptively have somebody delegated through official action for that. And so we do have a few entities that have provided a co- a name for that.
Oh, yeah, okay, but can't be official.
Correct.
Till after the third hearing.
Correct, yes, sir.
Right. Anything else?
I.
We're gonna back to it again if you think.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I reserve my time.
Uh, Daryl is the next one.
Scott Sors. Uh, Scott Sors, Eldora, City Council, so just, I wanna encourage these supervisors to take us through the process, basically, I think, whether it happens or not in the vote final ballot, I think we need to go through the process because it's important to account for that.
Anything else? Thank you.
Scotty Berry.
So, um, I am volunteering as, as the representative, and so I guess too, I'm following along. Good thing I'm third in place because I'm following along with them, I don't feel like we've gotten enough information, enough of the process. Um, you know, to really follow through, and my understanding now is that we really don't have anything in place until we do vote three times, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is it this group here then that will determine whether or not we're gonna move on as far as with an advisory committee?
Correct, it'll be the, the supervisors affirm three times and then it can move, then we can then move to the advisory council.
So are we getting good representation from the whole county as a whole?
So, yeah, so every township would have a representative.
Right, have you heard from all of the town?
Not all of them yet, I think some of them are waiting to, you know, make sure that things happen. Uh, and then every town would have a representative and then every EMS entity would have a representative.
Okay.
So.
If that's what we pick. But yeah, that's, that's what he's asked for.
And have you done research in, in, I was hearing a little bit like Webster's, I know that Webster County, you know, ended up going, but in the term of two years to get this established, um. So have you gone and observed, talked to them and gotten their input as to how this worked for them to become a success, or is it a success? What are the outcomes of some of these areas that have gone?
So they, uh, I've, I've talked to the supervisor of their Webster County and it started off really rocky and that they had a meeting held about, I don't know, three weeks ago. And they went through a lot of different things, um, I, I think the council that was there misinterpreted what it was, but I, I don't have the results as to how it came out, but they, they needed a lot more clarity afterwards. They, they were assuming they just had this money, they could do what they want, well, no, it had to be approved by the board, I believe it's how their referendum was made. And the board didn't approve anything yet, but they were ready to spend money.
Yeah, and I've followed one of the first county, I think the first county in the state was Wright County, uh, former, uh, chief deputy Jim Lester, now a, a city of Washington's police chief, kind of orchestrated the first state movement in Wright County. Uh, there was a lot of, uh, gas and check out of the gate because nobody had done it before. So that was the first one I followed and then I have followed, uh, numerous others, including Tama County's in the process, Butler County, uh, is in the process, so locally, it, it, it's gonna take some time and so I follow, uh, those counties and what's worked and what's not working, but the demographics, geography, current infrastructure. And those things really come into play and so, uh, a one size fits all just doesn't work and I, I speak to Jim Lester on occasion, who's down in Washington, Iowa now, and, uh, it's really that advisory committee. They've gotta find consensus in a lot of different aspects of this, so.
And the referendum will answer how it's done. That's what they have to put together.
You know.
So if the committee, assuming that it passes three times, the committee has sworn move on, so it passes a ballot measure, so there is money set aside when that committee. My understanding, there will be a three-person commission that manages that money, is that, am I off base on that?
I don't.
Or that committee will stay in effect and they will be the ones.
Right.
That decide, when they make a recommendation, does it need to be approved by the supervisors or is that committee gonna have?
Oh, so the dollars and cents, uh, that becomes the ballot language. Let's just say they would approve a dime. Let's say when they find out in five years that that's not enough and they wanna raise it to fifteen cents, there would have to be an entirely new ballot measure for that.
And what about distribution of those funds that are gathered?
That would be, that would be how it's distributed, I mean.
Yes.
That would be up to the referendum.
So the referendum has to have all that detail?
Yeah.
Yes. You can make it as simple as the board of supervisors can control it. You can make it as difficult as each township trustee controlled their portion and city controlled theirs. It, it's how you do the referendum that the people are voting on, on how this will be spent or levy and spent.
And so one of the dynamics is that with first responders that don't transport, that have no billing method, how do you keep them afloat while, uh, then providing funding for transport services? You know, there's a big gap between those two.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
That, that hence fact.
Because right now, I mean, one of the probably biggest disparities in funding is for the first responders that don't have a mechanism of, uh, buying or replenishing that fifteen hundred dollar set of defibrillator patches compared to paramedic service that at least has a, an ability to bill for it.
I mean, this, this referendum could be so complex, I don't even know how to answer that. Um, it, it could say, hey, this percent of the money is gonna go for equipment, this percent's gonna go for personnel, it could be broke up in multiple different ways, it's an infinite answer.
Okay. But it's gonna be a committee to decide what goes on the referendum.
Correct.
Yes.
And it could be, and I'm thinking out loud, so this, I have, this is not a preconceived thought, but there could be a three or five-person commission established to manage those funds.
Hmm.
If that's what the referendum put on there, yes.
Okay.
If you want an oversight committee within it at, at the end, yeah.
And I would suggest that they would have rules on how those people are picked.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's just, yeah, one more rabbit hole to spin over.
Exactly, okay, all right. Provides some clarity for me. So I would make another comment that I have, since this subject has first come up several months ago. In my mind, one of the biggest, for lack of a better term, disparities we have is that every community is supporting their own EMS services, whatever level they are. And if you happen to live in an unincorporated portion of Harden County, in the almost all cases, with the exception of a couple of townships, there is no contribution made to EMS services. And correct me if I mistake this, but with that as a basis, the farmers that I have talked to, uh, if you ask the first question, do you want availability of EMS services six miles out in the country in the middle of a field, well, absolutely, that's a no-brainer, everybody wants that. And the second question then is, do you feel like you should help contribute to covering the cost of providing that service? And they all say, yes, I have not had one, say no, now obviously it depends on how the funding is done and how, where it comes from, how much it is and all that. But every single one of them, uh, is surprised that they're not already contributing. They thought they were. They know they are in fire department, but they did not realize they were not within EMS service. So, like, to me, most of them, it's all gonna come down, most of the farmers, it's gonna come down to, um, the funding mechanism, how it affects them. Uh, and what that looks like.
That's why you want the township's representative.
Absolutely, yes, 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 no, I totally agree with that. But it appears to me that there's a lot of support for the measure and then, I was, with all these things, it's gonna be the doubles of the details of how it's arrived, how it's divvied out, for lack of a better term, how it's spent. Who's rewarded for what, do you build a fund for catastrophes or not, or you make sure your balance is zero at all times, or how does that go about? So a lot of work to be done, but I'm just curious on the setup on how that gets through there.
So Daryl had a comment.
Kind of dovetail off, uh, what you're talking about. Dave is, uh, under the code, this advisory council that is created is perpetual. Uh, and it says that they, you know, annually, if, if there is a tax that is approved by the voters of the county, then that advisory council shall, I'm just redirecting the code, shall us annually assess and review the emergency medical services needs of the county and shall include the results of such review and assessment in an annual report filed by the board of supervisors, so they meet annually to review what's happening and then, um, the, the supervisor to have a public hearing on that report, no sooner than fourteen days after the report is filed. And so then the public, you know, is continually involved and they then also under the code have the right to file a petition. You know, the percentage is twenty five percent of the votes cast for the last either presidential or govern, or gubernatorial election, twenty five percent of those voters signed a petition, they can have the, uh, matter put back on the ballot to discontinue the tax, so there is a way to remove it, the voters have it, you know, input both on the inclusion of the tax and the repeal of that tax.
Or change your rate.
Hmm, this says discontinue.
Is it possible to authorize through the ballot, or and amount in an up two type situation? And then only exercise part of that. So the example would be the ballot measure would say you can tax up to sixty five cents per thousand. But we're only gonna exercise thirty five cents of that year one because we think that's all that's gonna be necessary. And then gradually raise it if they needed to.
So it could be, seriously not to exceed sixty five cents?
Exactly, is that, and then the council could change it every year, is that?
That has to be voted on though each time, yes, if you start at X amount of dollars per whatever the amount is. I was informed by some, yeah, folks that I talked to recently. John Smith, I'll go up and put it in a minute, but I, I was informed that, cause I had told that, okay, this, this county says, hey, we're gonna start out at thirty five cents per whatever. And then I said, well, then can't we just gradually raise that over time? And I was told, no, that has to be revoted on, so to assume that you can just go forward is a false sense of moving forward without the vote, is that true or not? I don't know, that's a fact, this is just information.
You just asked two separate questions.
Okay.
So the way you just presented it, that's a fact, the way he's presenting it would be a fact also.
Okay.
What's the referendum saying? We don't have it, so what's the referendum gonna say, and I believe that's what you're asking.
Yeah, could, could the referendum say we have the, the authority, the tax up to sixty five cents?
Yeah.
And it could be reviewed annually by the committee and determined what it needs to be.
Hang on a second. Daryl, that's a good question for you.
I don't think that you could give discretion, you could put in a referendum specific, year one, it's this year two, is that? And the voters know exactly what they're saying yes or no to, as opposed to unknowns or the, you know, fiat of some small group, so I think you can, you have to make it specific, you can't make a floating target.
Okay, it could have been not to exceed.
Think about that, I don't know.
I'm just thinking over ti- as time goes on, things change.
Yes.
And it would, my idea would be, I find a way so you don't have to have another referendum, as long as you're within the, the limit.
Right.
Well, this, I mean, four twenty two D is, there's a lot of steps involved and, and the legislature intentionally made it hard to create a tax.
Sure. Okay.
Donna.
And that's something, that's probably get, that's a long ways down the road to determine that, but.
But it's, it's a process for public hearing.
Yeah.
All right, Donna.
Um, so this brings me to wonder, would that tax be, uh, for the general only? Or would there be one for general and then an additional tax in rural?
So general and rural are your two terms you're using?
Yeah, and if, if that's to be, can you please define what exactly that means? General's every property in Harden County and rural is the.
Basically, rural is basically anything that isn't within a city or town limit.
Okay.
There are taxes that in reality rural people are taxed twice, whereas general, uh, urban are only taxed once.
Well, urban are taxed twice also, they have city tax and general through the county.
So the question is, who would maintain this?
No, who gets the highest tax?
I think that's what the referendum says, but I think it's a really good point to ensure that people aren't double taxed or to ensure that the tax per general versus rural is, um, is equitable and fair. I think that has to be looked at by the advisory committee.
I, I would have to agree with that, um, I can't, I can't answer which maybe the rural services are being taxed for the rural value and the urban are taxed through the urban, each city pays their tax and the county taxes theirs for the rural services, the cities are paying their portion, I don't know. Any other comments?
Or? I can, I don't know if this is answers Donna's question, but it gives me something to, to look into, cause there's wording here in the code that says the tax or combination of taxes specified shall not be imposed on property within or on residents of a benefited emergency medical services district under chapter three fifty seven F. I have no idea what those words mean.
I've gotta look, I gotta find out what those words mean, cause that might answer your question, but apparently you're not the first person to think of that question or something close to it, so.
And I'm glad I'm not the only one that didn't understand it, what you just said.
So to try and add a little more clarity. And I'm gonna just speak for myself and Eldora. We in Eldora are already contributing to EMS through our city taxes that we use to support the local EMS. So in theory, and this is not in practice necessarily, although it could be, if you added the sixty five cents and it was enough to cover all the services, you could see theoretically, our taxes in the city go down. The levy to support the city with this sixty five cents to support EMS directly, so it doesn't necessarily mean your taxes in total are going up. It's a matter of how they're earmarked and distributed.
Correct.
My completely, I, that's the way I look at it.
And, and every person would have a different answer.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor Dunn and I have spoken about this before, that, you know, um, the city of Eldora is brunting or footing the cost for rural new providence on transport calls and.
Sure.
So it would make sense.
So it would make sense that if. Mayor Dunn no longer has to budget to put those bills, he could reduce that levy for. Eldora residents.
Right.
Yeah. That's conversation a few years old.
Yeah.
Multiple members.
I, I think you.
But it's not.
Yeah.
Well, I got Daryl there and I have an answer.
Well, Pauline's on the, the list, but she said a quick question, she's gotta leave, but it's something maybe to get her question asked.
How many ambulances do we have in Harden County?
No idea.
That are working and functioning or?
Yeah, what levels, um, that would be good for this commission to put together and find out first.
Cause I just wondered, um, when I had my accident. It was kind of a mess because, um, Eldora come out, Union come out. You would have thought it was a major thing, I think there was three cops out there, um. The highway was closed. Our gravel road was closed, so I just wondered, um, you know, I felt that was kind of like. I ended up having to go in Eldora ambulance because. Union didn't have all of the equipment that they needed. So I just kinda was wondering like, what ambulances have the equipment and what staff is trained? You know, to do, to transport people, so.
That varies by the time of day and what community you're in.
Okay.
Yep.
So you. So nobody.
I don't know, I, I think I will fall to four or five AM, okay, and there, um, and. I think two of them are staffed ACLS twenty-four seven, usually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
Eldora has two now, and one will be ALS and one will be on call.
Yep, and then you got Hubbard, their, uh, BLS service. Radcliffe have. Union has one, Ackley has multiple ambulance.
Will be good, but just for.
Right, but not, so non-transport, so, yeah. But, uh, Ackley is also doing education to, of their level of care too. Um, so, yeah, it just depends on the day and the time and who's on vacation, who's not on vacation.
So I think maybe that should be.
That's, that's, the service standards are part of this.
Yeah, that should be entered into all of this too, or I'd like to see, and how can you get on this? Like, I know the townships, um, how do you get in on this township to?
Talk to your township trustees.
I don't even know who it is, to be honest.
I can find out and let you know, Pauline.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Dave, did you have more?
No, no.
Daryl, we got anybody else?
John Schmitz.
John?
Yeah. So hi everybody, my name is John Schmitz, I'm a retired army engineer. And have disabilities because my time in the Gulf War and I've unfortunately had to use. The EMS multiple times because my diagnosis as a government quote is undiagnosed. That being said. I didn't realize until I was in the city council and I heard the terminology of.
Can you take that outside, can you compare that at least?
I heard the term essential services, I didn't know what that means, I put a piece in, article in the paper. What we're here talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, is the very terminology essential services. Which means that essential services means that if it's voted into place. That the county would have the funds needed so that individual in the middle of nowhere calls an EMS. Or, and they say, hey, we got a guy fell out of a tractor, got a bale of hay rolled on him, whatever, I need help and I need it now. Okay, then the money would be there if the citizens vote yes on that. It has to be voted on in order for the terminology essential to take place, okay? Fire and, and, and our police forces already. Are already said to be essential, that term already is in place, it is not the fact in our EMS group, okay? That's what this is all about, and it does cost money, costs money to run everything. You know, I used to work, I worked at the, I worked at the nursing home, uh, in Marshalltown, the VA, the VA home there for a while. Uh, medical stuff is insanely expensive, I mean. Because it can be, go to replace an outlet, one outlet here and one outlet here, might be twenty amp outlet, but this one, it comes from. A medical provider and this one doesn't, what's the difference? Uh, this one comes from a medical provider and this one doesn't, okay, meaning that this one might be ten dollars. Cause I bought it at Menards and this one might be fifty dollars, cause it comes from a medical provider. Just how our world's put together, that's kind of extreme instance, but the bottom line is it costs money. And, um, they were using the terminology, um, BLS, basic life support systems. Versus ALS, advanced life support system. And I asked, uh, some folks who work in the business, what exactly does that mean? What's the difference? And they said, basic life support, now I might get this wrong, so I, please correct me, I, I'm not. Don't know anything about EMS, other than thank goodness they've been there to help me when I needed it. And, um, basic life support system, they, they explained it as kind of like a tech, okay, tech in a nursing home, let's just use that. Versus. Uh, advanced life support system, there are the people that can put IDs in you, they can do a multitude of things that the other personnel cannot. Okay, so that's the difference. Um, this all boils down to money, it's unfortunate, I asked the folks, what is the biggest thing here? They said the biggest thing is people don't know that we have to have money. You, I, I think our city, being Eldora. The smaller of the two larger cities in Harden County is, is doing their due diligence, okay? They have to make it work, they wanna make it work, but there's other counties out there that have failed to make it work. And if you wanna be on the, the end of not receiving, you know, be on the fumble side of things. Don't get upset, because you didn't wanna pay a few bucks to have a loved one laying on the ground and why is EMS not here? Well, because you voted on saving a few bucks, okay, that's, there's no polite way of putting it, you, you fumbled. Okay, it has to be put in place. I've lived here, my family moved here roughly in nineteen seventy-seven, my dad was postmaster here. When I went into service, we came back, okay, again, the terminology essential service, it's ninety-nine percent of the people in this county. Of a population of what, sixteen thousand plus or minus, I would venture, I have no idea what that means. To me, I think the bottom line is, I turn on the tap of my faucet, I expect water to come out, okay? That's like, I called nine one one, I expect an ambulance to show up. That isn't guaranteed right now, that's what, that's what this is all about. EMS is not a guaranteed service. In Harden County, Iowa, as we speak, fourteen other counties within the state of Iowa. I have, are currently providing that service, Harden is not one of them. That's why this is so, so incredibly important that we make this happen, okay? So, my family's had to use it multiple times, I'm sure people here. Families or loved ones, heavens forbid, we have something happen at our, at our, at our schools. And, and, you know, right now, people are gonna show up, our, 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 our council is making things happen. But even they have had to restructure things lately, okay, they're trying to make it work, okay? It's a hope and a prayer, they're making it work, but right now, I'm gonna be sarcastic here. And say that we're kind of panhandling for the money that we're getting, we're trying to make it work. But eventually, we're gonna step off that curb and fumble, and then people are gonna get upset, because you wanted to save a few bucks, okay? So keep that in mind, um, the people out there that are listening to me now, I would love to be. On a committee that provides information, I don't, never been on EMS. I don't know anything about it, other than when they come to me, I'm retired because of the things that happened during the Gulf War, I got time. Okay, I don't have all the answers, I can help get the answers, I can help spread the word. I'm, I was a non-commissioned officer in the army, they expect something, if you don't get stuff done, guess what, you lose rank, go bottom of the barrel, and it's like. That proverbial, you'll know what flows downhill, uh, so, um, I don't think I've missed anything. I appreciate you all dying, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Excellent, Daryl.
Ms. Calloway.
Um, I think there's been some really good questions asked, and I would just ask that the advisory council, um. Report back more than annually to the supervisors. Um, I think things like setting the stage, like Pauline asked about, what is our current situation? Addressing some of the things that John addressed about finances, it'd be great to know who in the county is. Paying taxes currently for EMS, who isn't? And so, uh, maybe at the next public hearing or at the one on September, the Monday night meeting, I believe. Um, there could just be a presentation, a summary presentation of the facts of our current situation. I think that would address some of the questions that have been asked today. Um, and then I think also that the advisory council needs to. Understand that if you're gonna have fifty people in the room starting this, not everyone will be actively participating in each stage. Um, John just mentioned, you know, my skill set, I can help get the word out. And there are gonna be other people like our EMS professionals who can really answer the question about. What each service currently provides, and then there will be our city people who can provide the financial side of it. And it's important to know that because this is such a complex issue, not all of the answers will come at the same time. And not all will come easily, so I just asked that the advisory council do some sort of periodic check-in at the supervisors meetings. To inform the public what's going on.
Thank you, Carrie.
Any other public comments?
That's it.
All right. Before I close the public hearing. Anything else to be said?
Nothing.
All right, I can entertain a motion to close.
Lance, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing at nine forty-one AM.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion, and thank you all for being here. Any others? All the bear say aye.
Aye.
Bush carries. Thank you. You bet, thank you. You bet. All right, next is consideration and knowledge received of the animal feed and operation construction permit, bold site, section thirty, Alden Township.
And it makes said motion?
I will second, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Bush carries, now is to set time in the hearing.
Lance, I'd make a motion to set the time and date for the public hearing for bold site, section thirty. For September third, nine oh one AM at the Harden County Port House in the large conference room.
I will second. Any discussion, we can make that work on the.
Yep, I thought.
Good, any other discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Bush carries, now is consideration approved road use agreement with Twin Rivers Exploration.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the road use agreement with Twin Rivers Exploration.
The motion's being made right now, I'll second. It's been moved and seconded discussion, I did have a question.
Does anybody know who owns the mineral rights on these properties?
Hmm. They'd be in the deed.
Yes, the, the county records represent the mineral ownership, uh, in this particular area, typically the surface owner is the mineral owner.
Really?
Uh, in some cases, people sever their minerals historically, but uniquely Iowa, I have not seen mineral severance at all. It's very unique, honestly, across the country.
Yeah.
It's usually severed, so, and I think it's, it's due to the lack of historic energy development in this area. Typically, when you have that type of operation, people will sever their minerals, but this is. Haven't looked at every single property in the entire county, but we have looked at, that's what we're doing.
Have to look at others.
Yeah, you probably own down to the multi-quarter, the center of the earth, yeah.
That would be good.
Aaron, did you have any concerns with this?
No.
Um, any other discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Bush carries, next we have is change of status.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the change of status for Aiden Butler, effective August eleventh. Uh, at a rate of twenty-seven fifty-five an hour.
I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
He received or earned certification in asphalt and concrete, uh, materials testing.
Any other discussion?
He's the only one of my road crew that has that, so it's nice to have additional hands, so, that's four of us total in our whole department.
It was an increase of.
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents.
Yep.
Um, any other discussion, discussion? Very none, all bear say aye.
Aye.
Bush carries, other business?
I have nothing, Lance.
Well, I have one, uh, Friday. I thought Bluebird Trail, D sixty-seven, south of between Union and Conrad will be closed just for a couple hours for paving.
Okay. So from there, no other business, uh, public comments?
Julie Dunn.
Julie, come on up.
Okay, here we are today, um, the discussion on EMS. Um, and essential services, the complexity of the law seems. That's a shame. But we have this woman here and her party. Um, wants to, uh, make it so nobody pays taxes. When you pay no taxes, don't expect any thing in, in return. You, you will lose services, so, hey, you don't wanna pay taxes, you get nothing. But then it comes back to the state, what doesn't wanna be responsible for. Good things, it falls back on you guys. Cause you're on your own and people out here, you're just on your own, don't count on that. Um, oh, and when it comes to the twin, twin rivers thing. Supposedly, um, looking for hydrogen for, uh, yeah, clean, clean power, is that? Yeah, um, we already know the board of supervisors has an aversion to clean energy. Proven by your extreme dislike for wind energy, so, um. But they're gonna, you know, approve, they approved this, whatever it is, um. People need to understand that the search for hydrogen is not just clean energy. Can also be made to anhydrous, anhydrous ammonia, which is the most likely outcome of this. Because farmers need it and they pay a lot for it and. Um, of course, more anhydrous ammonia we have, and that's applied to worship water quality. Is, because we know. We know about impaired waters, don't we? Um, but anyway. I guess that's all I have for right now, I just. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Pauline, which was left. Dave, who also has left, and John Schmitz, who has, I think they signed up on. Just to cover their bases, so.
I got another road forever, just come up, there are three roads, all right, I told you about Bluebird Trail. Monday, the Sherman intersection, we'll call it that, and D forty-seven and D twenty-seven. That'll be closed for maybe a month, that road project is starting, okay, so that's the big one, and then they're doing the road west of Alwassa. That concrete road, that'll start. Can't, it might be tomorrow or Friday, I can't remember what he said, but that'll be open to traffic though.
With pilot.
How would you get to Alwassa then?
You'll do it from the east.
East or south, however you want, are you going? You'll still be able to get there, they're just, they're just grinding.
Shut up.
So, yeah, so, everything's coming all at once, so.
Yeah, and that inter, that intersection that you're talking about, the curve.
Yeah. Odd Y shape and, uh, the state recommended, they did a study before I got here. That next time you do that, you should turn into a straight T, so we are, so a different direction will stop than is used to. So we're gonna need positive signage just to get people used to it, like you're coming up to a T, it's natural to stop, but. Be fine used to it.
Right. And then you said they're starting that next week?
Yes. Whether Monday, and Gerke's is doing that work. Monday and Gerkeys is doing that work and then. Uh, Matt Minatz is doing the paving once they're done.
Okay, yeah, they, Minatz, they did the other road and they got it done pretty quick.
Hmm. Yeah, I think the longest portion of the project will be redoing the intersection green, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
And no other public comments, um, I can ask for a adjournment.
Then make a motion to adjourn, Lance.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, it's nine fifty.